The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, welcome everybody to our town meeting of September 19th. And I'll call this meeting to order and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in its own way, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. Roll call, Kate.
Counselor Campagnelli.
Counselor Evans.
Here.
Mayor Kucinski.
Here.
Counselor Luddy.
Here.
Counselor Peñesa.
Here.
Counselor Rochette.
Here.
Counselor Lawson.
Here.
Mayor, you have a question.
Thank you. We start off with our audience of citizens. Now, we do have two public hearings tonight. And during the public hearings, one is the public hearing for the golf commission ordinance, and the second one is for a peddler ordinance, just some changes there. During the public hearings, you will have an opportunity to speak during those public hearings, or you can speak now, up to you, you guys. So, we do have a public hearing, and I'll make sure you, we'll prompt you to know that as the time to speak. Or now. Anybody want to speak at this point about anything else, or anything at all? Yes, sir.
Len Zalinski, 24 Wine Sap Road. One question, I noticed that Mark Bayram's contract was on the agenda for tonight. And my question was, on the calculation for a third year, is, and it said golf cart revenue, it said gross, but now keeping in mind that Mark, under the proposed contract, would be getting 6 percent, so is he going to be, is he going to be measured on gross before he takes his 6 percent, or after? The other question is, I see we've got a new screen up here. You've got an item on the agenda for a right-of-way. Are we going to be, are the residents on TV going to be able to see a map of what we're talking, what you're talking about tonight? That's all, thank you.
Thank you. You're assuming we have caught up with technology, Len? Right? It's a big assumption. We do have this TV screen, however. That may not be functional tonight for that purpose, but we will explain it very well. I trust we will very, we'll explain it. And as far as that issue, should we wait for that item?
John Zuck is here to discuss.
Okay, so we can discuss that. Len? Yeah.
One question.
Good questions, hopefully, we hopefully will have the answer on that. When we get to that item, that's great. Appreciate you bringing it up. Anyone else in the audience? Hearing none, I will close that part of the meeting, and we'll move on to our consent agenda. If everyone has read the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion.
Okay. Motion to accept the items in the consent agenda that's in front of us tonight.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, move. Okay. All right, so, next is our public hearings. We will take them separately. So, I'll call the first public hearing to order. And we're meeting here for the purpose of holding public hearings on the following proposed ordinance of the town. The first one being an ordinance establishing a public golf course commission. And, Kate, do we need to read the legal notice? We don't need to, so we will waive the reading of the legal notice. So, we are in our public hearing. Now is the time for public comments, so if anyone wishes to speak about our ordinance.
Name and address.
Yeah, we just need you to come up to the mic, and name an address, if you would, for the record.
Okay, my name is Cynthia Povano, 57 Meeting House Row.
Welcome.
I am totally in favor of this commission. However, I want you to know both senior women and senior men have been treated very, very poorly this year by Park and Rec Commission. In fact, we've all paid, most of us, for restricted membership for the year, but not allowed to make times. This was corrected, by the way, about a month ago at the Park and Rec, because we were so disturbed about it. And their commission voted 100 percent to grant us this. So, my one request is would you make sure that at least seniors are represented? I don't care Democrat, Republican, but at least be represented on this, on this commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishes to speak regarding the golf commission? Yes? Yes, sir.
Len Zalinski, Chairman of the Park and Rec Commission, 24 Wine Sap Road. The commission, I mean, the Park and Rec Commission, people on our commission are a bit disappointed, because the golf course has been a major source of interest for us. We have spent a lot of our time during the meetings going over that. And we focused, we've tried to focus on the metrics on the golf course, looking at it from a business standpoint. We made some decisions, as Cindy pointed out, that haven't, haven't been well received, and we've adjusted for that. Basically, I don't think I just said this, we consider that the golf commission is a fait accompli. But one of the things that I think should be considered, the ordinance spells out the mix of Democrats and Republicans. However, I think that you really have to be careful, because you've got a number of groups of golfers out there. Whether they have competing interests or not, I don't know. But at any rate, you've got season pass players, you've got various clubs players, men's clubs, senior women's, senior men's, and there may be other kind of looser associations. But in addition to this, I think what you have to do is you've got to get a balance in there. And you've, you really have to have somebody with business acumen, who is not, who is a non-golfing resident, to try to put a balance. Because you really, I don't feel you really want this to become a greens committee, as is what is seen at private courses. This is basically a policy, as it's set up right now, a policy and advisory commission. Now, as far as, I just happen to review, be reviewing the ordinance tonight, and just kind of point out something, that in paragraph 2-185, that's basically a repeat of the paragraph immediately above that. From a housekeeping standpoint, that might be something you want to clean up. Thank you.
Just, Len, just to answer the one question about the Republicans, Democrats, that's by statute, you know, I mean, that's whatever the, you know, whatever the statute tells us, you know, whoever, however we split up the commission members, that's always statutory, so, yeah, this is not, we're not looking upon necessarily as any political issue, but that's why it has to be broken out the way it is. Okay, any other comments from anyone? Okay, hearing none, I will close the...
There's one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Turn the lights on.
Now, see, now we've turned the lights on in the back, so I can't see your hands raised, see? So, that's another problem.
Sebastian Senya, 8 Dunham Drive, Berlin, Connecticut. As a former member of Park and Rec, I think the golf course and golf commission, separate from Park and Rec Commission, would provide greater representation from people with specific knowledge of the golf course and the operations of a top-level course. One of the things that I've noticed over the years, after leaving Park and Rec, we had, when I was on Park and Rec Commission, we had people that were specifically up there probably a good part of the week, looking at the golf course, overseeing the golf course with the superintendent at the time. I think over the years, Park and Rec has got so sophisticated with other activities within the town, that they just don't have the time and the personnel on the Park and Rec Commission to really spend time up at the golf course. So, the golf commission is definitely an asset to the, to the golf course. Thank you.
Any other comments on the public session? Seeing no hands this time, I will close the public comments, and now we have our town council comments, so. Counselors wish to speak? Now will be the time.
I will say something, I know it's going to come up again when we actually vote on it, but I am in favor of the commission, but I am going to echo what Mr. Zalinski said about, and it's going to be contingent on whoever's sitting up here, to put people on that commission that balance out and aren't all from, you know, one association or another association. I do think it's going to be important that there is someone on there who may not be a golfer, to what Len said earlier. It won't be me, it won't be all of us, but I just want to echo what Mr. Zalinski said, and make sure that we get a balanced group on that commission, and I know you all talked about that in the ordinance committee.
Anyone else? Any other comments? I would just add that, you know, the, we've gone through, I think, three ordinance committee meetings about the golf course, I believe. Three? Two? At least two. Three, I think.
There were several.
Yeah, several, let's put it that way, that's a better choice of words. So, you know, we've taken a lot of testimony, we've really looked at this issue for quite a while. I know there's a history there. It's an important asset to the town, probably one of the biggest assets to our town. So, I think, you know, it demands some, perhaps, additional attention, which is why this ordinance is before us for the public hearing, so. Hearing no other comments from my counselors, we will go ahead and close the town council comments, and we will close the public hearing at 7:14. And after we're done with the next public hearing, we'll move on to discuss the approval of the ordinance for the golf commission, as well as the other one. So, we have a second public hearing tonight at around 7:15. I'd like to call to order our second public hearing on a proposed ordinance. This is an ordinance amending Article III, Peddlers and Solicitors Ordinance, adding Section 5-34, revocation or suspension. That is the purpose of our hearing. Kate, you don't need to read the legal notice, we're waiving that.
I will stop.
Okay. We have our public comment section now on this particular ordinance, the peddler ordinance. Any comments on this from the public? All right. Seeing none, we will close that section of our public hearing. Any, we'll move on to our town council comments. Any comments from town council members? All right, hearing none, I will, and what we did with this, folks, and we'll discuss it as we get to the approval process, is just something we needed to clean up. The suspension part of it, the revocation suspension wasn't very clear. And this is really to protect the public for solicitors that we allow to come to town, they need, they need, you know, approval to do things, but if they don't do what they say they're going to do, then we have to have a way to protect us and perhaps revoke their license or, or suspend it. So, that's what this is about. We'll talk a little bit more about it after, when we get to the other section. So, I'll close our town council comments, and I'll close the public hearing at, I guess, 7:16. And we will move on to new business. Before we start new business, one more.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to add, which will be Agenda Item Number 10, the 824 referral that was on our desk when we got here.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Some move. Okay. All right, so new business, Mr. Healy, number one, topic number one.
Number one is a follow-up to the public hearing you said, is for the adoption of a golf course commission ordinance, which establishes a golf course with seven members, each member has a three-year term to be standard, I believe, so it's a 3-3-2 arrangement.
And as we, all right, thank you. And, you know, again, we've taken a lot of testimony on this, the ordinance committee obviously spent a lot of time on it. The rest of our counselors that were not on the ordinance committee, they had a chance to, to look at this. And, I'm just, well, let's take a motion, then we can, we can discuss it.
Okay. I will move to approve the adoption of an ordinance establishing a public golf course commission.
Second?
Second.
All right. So, second for discussion. Let me just leave this off, then we can discuss, just so the public's aware of it, so, and this is in brief, obviously, some bullet points, that the commission be responsible for preparing and submitting budgets, including staffing, making and enforcing rules and regulations for orderly golf play, operation of the course, and attendant facilities, directly participating in negotiations of all proposed contract with individuals, partnerships, corporations, and our other operational entities, and developing and establishing alteration plans, renovations, capital improvements, with a priority list for implementing same. And again, we took a lot of testimony, we think that it, the ordinance committee felt that it needed some individual attention, hence our ordinance is here. We will strive to put, you know, seven members, as we do with all our commissions, seven members that certainly have the best interest of the town and the golf course at heart, and as we, you know, we'll make those, we'll make those appointments at a later date, because if we do approve it tonight, it has to, we have a 30-day effective date that, after publication, that it would be adopted, so. That's my little summary, so now, any other counselors wish to speak? Yes?
I have a question, and I don't know if it's for Mayor Jack. In terms of the staff liaison, who's going to be responsible for this commission, is that going to be Mr. Zuck? Is it going to be you? Who is going to be kind of responsible for, is it going to be Kevin Delaney? You know, if they're proposing a budget, so just, Kevin's like, "No."
It's easy, John Zuck.
It's going to be John, okay.
The intention is to have the superintendent, you know, continue to, in that role, and then, that he would work with the golf commission.
Okay, thank you.
So, there to advise on how policies, you know.
Yes.
I just want the public to understand that the commission will still be under the guidance of the finance board and the town council, it won't be an autonomous, do whatever you feel like, bunch of golfers. It'll be like every other commission, and it'll be a town-wide control.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's no different than any of our commissions, they obviously have rules, but they answer to, you know, the council, the town manager, so, I mean, it will be no difference in that, it's just a specialized commission for, again, our, one of our greatest assets, that we want to perhaps develop even further. Anyone else? Any other comments?
Pretty good.
Pretty good. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, move. So, thank you. So, what this means, we'll wait for 30 days, so perhaps sometime before the 30 days, we actually can appoint members, right? But we would wait...
As long as the effective date of the appointment is 30 days after.
After.
October 21st.
Okay, and that's, so that's what we would do, so, I know we have some applications in, we don't have them in our packet tonight, but we'll certainly go through them in the next couple of weeks, and one of our meetings in October, we can make the appointments with the effective date after, after the date that obviously the commission and the ordinance are approved, so, that would be the plan going forward for the golf commission. And after that, after the 21st, they are free to set up their meeting, and, first meeting, and to move forward. So, thanks for everybody up here, and it was, it was actually, it's been kind of a long road, it's, we took a lot of testimony, ordinance committee worked hard, appreciate that, and the council also reviewed everything, so, a lot of conversations with Mr. Healy, and a lot of different people in town that are, you know, in favor of it, issues that they've had over the last years and months, and so, we really, we took it to heart, and, you know, I think it's the best way to go, and hopefully, you know, it'll, it'll move on and be very successful. Okay, topic number two.
Agenda item number two is to amend the peddlers, solicitors, and ordinance. It needs to be tightened up in certain areas about revocation, suspension of licenses. We had a certain incident that brought that to light. It also includes a appeal process, so that if a license is suspended or revoked, that the peddler can't come back to the town and appeal and request their, request that they get the funding back.
Okay, great, thanks. Motion?
I will move to approve amending an ordinance entitled Peddlers and Solicitors to allow for the revocation and suspension of licenses.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Questions? Discussion? Obviously, our town council, town attorney has reviewed it, and, all right, Mr. Donaprio.
Yeah, the prior ordinance didn't have a revocation or appeal process in it, and as the town manager indicated, there was a specific incident, so we made up a process on the fly, because the licenses and property interest, or the licensees entitled to do process prior to revocation or suspension. So, the revised ordinance provides for a formal revocation or suspension process, as well as an appeal in the event that those actions are taken.
Great, so, housekeeping matter that we needed to take care of, and unfortunately brought to light by an instance with someone that had been granted a license and wasn't doing what they said they were going to do, and also, I believe, had some other issues from another town, so, keep our town safe. All right, any other comments? Questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Some move.
Agenda item number three is for the Timberland Golf Course Golf Professional Contract. It says donation, it's not a donation, it's a contract update.
Mike is going to donate.
And John Zuck here is here to discuss it. The golf, the golf pro has a contract, he's a contracted employee for the course, and there were certain provisions in it, that, he worked very hard, I give, I will give the golf pro credit, that he worked hard with John, they, they worked to modify the contract, give and take. The golf pro will participate in some of the cost of operating the golf shop by sharing costs and things like that, so, they worked hard, I think they came out with an equitable contract. So, John's here to discuss it.
I can just go through, and that definitely is not a donation, that's my error on that. Some of the changes in the contract, it's a two-year contract with a one-year extension, and to answer Len's point, it is on the gross revenue of the golf carts and the greens fees, season passes also. Annual retainer will remain the same, shop staff allowance is going up by $500, and that's due to maintaining the shop hours or keeping the golf shop open until 7:30 PM in the evening. Golf professional will take, control the starters and the salaries for the starters. This is one of the reasons for this, this is because of the starters are there late in the evening, he schedules the starters, and also supervises the starters. The gross amount of the cart revenue went from 8% down to 6%. The town is taking control of the, or going to be supervising the fueling of the carts, and also the maintenance with the cart vendor, which is currently is Easy Go, excuse me. And that's, and one of the other things is the golf professional is going to be participating, as the town manager stated, he will be paying 25% of utilities for the golf shop space, and that will be done on an eight-month, he'll do that for eight months of the season, and pay that in eight equal installments.
So, while Mr. Zuck is up there, I want to have a motion on the floor, but questions at this point?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. When you're talking about the golf cart revenue going down, and you mentioned that the town will take over gas and maintenance, was the golf pro doing that before?
What the, the golf professional was, it's not the fuel actually, it's a fueling schedule, actually, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Fueling schedule, and then the maintenance schedule of the carts. We will coordinate that with the Easy Go, make sure that we have all carts up and running for tournaments and things of that nature.
Okay, and then, the utilities, you said that would be eight months and equal installments, but how do you know what those equal installments will be?
We base that off of last year's amount.
Okay.
Yes.
So, just a general overall question, this does not look like a win necessarily for the golf professional in terms of his overall revenue, so my question is, you said that you had worked this out together.
Correct.
Is there any concern with him looking for something better somewhere else if we go down this route?
I don't believe so. The golf professional did, did receive approximately an $850 increase granted, I know, not as much as through the increase of the cart fees. We increased the cart fees 25 cents on nine holes and 8, and 50 cents on 18 holes, and that equates to about $800 in an increase.
Okay.
In his amount.
So, so this was done with Mark? It was, this was worked on together?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Rachel, just so that you know, it was originally written as a two-year contract. We talked to Mark, and Mark, there's certain things that Mark would like, and as far as time here, because I guess there's an anniversary coming up, he wanted to be here for it. He asked for the third year, and we worked out an agreement, I said, aware that the third year kicks in automatically. He shares the responsibility to try to expand the business of the golf course, and he helped to work on that, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Were we able to compare his, his fee as to other courses about the same size? Is it in line, or?
It, it's very difficult to compare it to other golf courses, because there's so many different ways that they receive revenue, some, I know, for instance, I believe Stanley, the golf pro there receives a portion of the greens fees, cart revenue, also it's 27 holes. It's, it's difficult to compare the contracts with other towns and municipalities, because of the different ways they compensate the golf professional.
Other questions? While we're asking questions, before we, all right, so let's hang on one second, John, so, make a motion on this?
Okay, I will move to authorize the interim town manager to enter into the contract with Mr. Bayram for services as the Timberland Golf Professional for the period from January 1st, 2018, through December 31st, 2019, with an option for one-year performance extension.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I, I know Mr. Healy, I know John, you did, and, you know, I know Mr. Bayram, appreciate it, I think all the time you guys spent on it, I had a, one day, a few weeks ago, I, I had an opportunity to go out there and visit with him and speak to him, and, you know, he seems, I don't want to speak for him, but he conveyed to me, and it was no secret, he said he was pretty happy with the way things ultimately had, were going for him, and I think he also seems to be looking forward to the golf commission as well. So, you know, I think that's great, appreciate all the time and effort everyone has put in, and certainly, again, everyone from the public with their comments is always very important to all of us, so. Hearing no other comments?
I just want to say, I was glad that you were able to work something out with him, I mean, he is the face of the golf course, really, and I know a lot of the young kids get along with him, and they like him, and the high schools down there...
The old ladies' church.
I just said that, because my son took lessons there a couple of years ago, and he's very good, so.
Most importantly.
I'm glad.
Yes.
All right, Mayor, I also had some experience, I'll go use another golf professional for kind of a junior golfers' club to assist in that, he did pay a particular visit on a day, and I took some extra time to explain what was going on with the course, so, I think he will continue to do well there in the position he's in.
That's great. All right, hearing no further comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, move. Thank you. John?
Agenda item number four, Counsel Rochette had earlier in July requested a review of the finance board and how it's going to operate, and relate to town and town council. Kevin Delaney has put together an outline, and is here to present that outline to the council.
Great. I think you all have a few-page document in there, I'm going to...
I think you all have a few-page document in there, I'm going to focus my remarks mostly on the first page, really in a few parts, first, trying to just level set between Town Council, Board of Ed, Board of Finance, in looking at other communities in similar structures, having conversations with folks from other towns. The way they're structured, and I would propose how we would operate, is the Town Council and the Board of Ed would be the policy and priority setting bodies for the town, and that the Board of Finance would serve to try to accommodate as many of those priorities through the budget and other financial means as possible, that the Board of Finance would propose financing methods that are in the best interest, both short and long term, of the community, and trying to create that stable tax environment while providing the quality that folks are looking for in the community. In looking at this, there's really three objectives that they've utilized in other communities. One is naturally developing the annual budget, presenting it to the community, working with the Town Council, and securing adoption. Second is providing oversight of that budget ongoing, some of the routine activities like transfers, but also dealing with unforeseen matters that may pop up during the year. And then lastly, and something that the interim town manager and I and others in the staff area have been working on, and I think this is really important, is developing and managing a 10-year financial plan. It's something that the rating agencies have asked for, it's something that I think would benefit the community in looking at grantless growth, tax base, as well as accommodating the needs and wishes of the community from a longer-term perspective. Except, one thing I do want to clarify, because I think it's important for staff, is that from a logistical standpoint, the intent, unless it's specifically called out differently in the charter, that financial items would go to the Board of Finance first for approval and then to council, and I think, you know, that's the proposal, proposed approach. It could certainly go the other way, but I think either way, it would benefit staff, and I think it would benefit accomplishing all of our objectives to clearly understand the path we would choose to take first, where it would go first and second. And again, I would propose Board of Finance first. Lastly, just to clarify, when the budget vote comes up, there'll be separate votes for the Board of Education and the town side of the budget, so just to be very clear as to how that would work, the intent would be that the Board of Ed operating budget, referred to as Department 60, would be voted on as the Board of Ed vote, and all other parts of the budget would be voted on as the town part of the budget. The way we operate today, the town manager does not have authority to make any changes to the Board of Ed operating budget, it is submitted as the Board of Ed and the superintendent submit it, but all other parts of the budget, including all of the facilities, activities, including the schools, the grounds, including grounds at the school, and all of the debt, including debt issued for the schools, falls under what would be considered the town part of the budget, and I think that's an important piece to have clarified before we get into November and votes are, I should say, sorry, in April, when votes are happening. So, with that, that's the first page, I have a couple of other things, but I'll pause there if there's questions or comments.
Sure.
So, a couple of questions, one in terms of, so, we're adding time to anything that has to happen, and we all know how fast government moves, right, so, we're adding even more time. We have some commissions and boards that meet monthly, do we have an idea, should Board of Fin, and I would suggest, if it's going to go to Board of Finance first, that they meet on off weeks that the council meets, so it can go to Board of Finance one week, it can get into the council packet for the next week, so that you can shorten that time that it's going to be adding as much as possible, that's just, would be my recommendation, if it hasn't already been determined. The second thing is around school versus town and Department 61, because Department 61, we know it has the capital and, you know, all of that in there, but there are some line items in 61 that are a little bit, kind of walk the line between school and town, and I would suggest when you go through these, each of the departments and the budget itself, and I'm assuming you are the staff liaison, lucky you, that you sit down with that Board of Finance and you really take a look at 61. We know in the past 61 has gotten, it's an easy place to cut, and so that's your, all your maintenance money and all your, you know, putting new smart boards in or doing new gym floors or whatever it is, so, looking at that and really explaining that to whoever's going to be on the Board of Finance, because I think that's going to be an area where it's, you know, you might want to think about if it needs to go back to 60 or if it needs to stay in the town side. I think that's what I have for now.
And just your first point, I will cover.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry.
Anything else right now?
No.
Yeah, I was just going to say on 61, and I saw it in the previous couple of years of working with the Board of Education, that there was great collaboration between the Business Director for the Board of Education and yourself, Mr. Delaney, and I would, you know, I think that that would continue, especially in the 61, where it'd be understood what's in there and that it's, what else is being done and handled by the Board of Education, so, I think that continued collaboration will be there, I don't think you need to write that into any ordinance or anything, but I think I've seen that happen.
And we will, I'll just elaborate on that, we have included the Director of Business Operations for the Board of Ed within the Capital Planning Committee, who ultimately will present to the town manager and to the Board of Finance the capital plan, so, whenever we've had capital meetings or discussions at the Board of Ed, we make sure that the Board of Ed is appropriately represented in all of the discussions leading up to every recommendation as well.
Excellent. Okay.
Just a couple of other things, you know, within the charter, it offers the opportunity to employ a secretary, I would recommend that the board do that, and we did budget for it this year, so. Second was frequency of meetings. In looking at other communities who have a similar setup, they meet monthly, my suggestion would be monthly, now, that's going to create a more, I call it a deliberate process, it's going to require, and I think this is where the 10-year plan, this is where more of the forethought comes in. I can tell you as a person who inevitably has conversations on virtually everything financial that comes forward, many of the fire drills can be avoided, and I think we as staff need to do a better job of avoiding that. That doesn't mean that everything could be, can be avoided, and in the charter, there is an option for the Board of Finance to call emergency meetings, just as council is able to have special meetings, so in the event, like, a delay in the state budget or something like that, special meetings could be called where necessary, but I think as a matter of routine and how we operate, other towns have been very effective in meeting monthly and accomplishing what they're trying to do, and I would propose that that's what we should be doing.
I have a couple of other questions. Okay, so, my question is about, not so much the budget, which is the big thing, but the little things, so, you know, you have to go out because it's $11,000 or something. That, so, I really, I'm trying to nail down the process, the staff goes to the Board of Finance and presents, I need $11,000 to fix a door. The Board of Finance approves it, then it comes to the Town Council, and the Town Council has to actually approve it, so the Town Council is still doing, they're still approving, so, we're kind of doing...
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, so, okay, so, my question becomes, and I know, and I know that the Board of Finance, I've been promised that it's not going to be political, however, however, should it be in the future, when Mr. Maglio is out there, what happens when it is on those little things, $11,000 for a door? It is a 3-3 tie, and then it has to, then we have to get the Board of Finance to come to the Town Council, and then it has to be that super majority for everything, or is that just for the budget?
My understanding, at 3 to 3, it would not pass, but I would defer to council.
If it doesn't pass, that super majority that you're referring to, or not super majority, but joint meeting is in the budget context only?
Budget context only, okay.
So, if it doesn't, so, if the $11,000 doesn't pass, the 3-3, it would just come to the council in that instance?
It would come to the council.
It would come to the council.
So, and what's the point of Board of Finance, I don't get it.
Mayor?
Yeah, yeah.
Is the question over on each individual item or on the budget as it comes to, you know, maybe they get to the end of it, and they've realized all the differences that they have, and they've summed those up, and then they've come to an impasse, and then it would come to the council? It doesn't, I think the question's around, you know, is everything going to come through a cycle that we have to consider, $11,000 in this meeting and the next meeting and another? I think that the spirit of it and the direction of it would be that it would be as a whole, as they come to present it, and then if they come to an impasse at a certain point, they have to buy time, because they'll be constrained by time, and if they don't come to it, then it would have to be then decided by the council.
My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but the question was, outside of the budget, if you have, if we have an $11,000 item that needs to go to bid in for approval, would that need to go through? And the proposal would be that it would go to the Board of Finance first for approval and then to the council, and with a 3 to 3 tie, my understanding is it would not pass the Board of Finance, I would think it would stop at that point, but I would defer to council.
Well, the way that this charter provision is written, it would ultimately come to the council, when, again, we're talking about not a scenario where the, well, it's a backup step, you have to keep in mind what the Connecticut General statutes provide in terms of the expenditure of unappropriated funds, okay? So, we're talking about a scenario where there are not funds that have been appropriated, right, so it's not part of the budget.
That's good.
So, we're looking for funds to be appropriated outside of the budget.
So, anything that was, is within the fiscal year's budget, if it falls within their, you know, whatever their budget amount is, council would never see it, because they would have approved it through the budget process.
Interdepartment transfers, intradepartment transfers don't come to the council.
Okay, so, say we had budgeted $1 million for a fire truck, they go out to, and that's part of the overall budget, we wouldn't see that again, that would be done at that point.
Correct.
Or, council wouldn't see that again.
Once the appropriations made, it's out of your hands.
Okay, so, once that budget is decided, councils, their agendas are going to be much smaller, right? That's what I'm assuming? Because we're not going to get all of this, you know, transfer or $11,000 RFP stuff, I just, I just am really trying to pin this down for anyone who's going to be on the Board of Finance.
As long as it's within the budget, as long as the appropriation, in other words, in your hypothetical, if the fire truck is purchased at or below the appropriated sum, then it doesn't come back to the Town Council.
Okay, okay.
And I would hope that, one of the reasons for the Board of Finance does take some workload off the council, yes, but I would hope, there are many, many other issues in town that I don't feel like in the last year and a half, two years I've been here, we don't have time for many times, because our meetings go late, and hopefully there's other policy decisions and different issues that we would have then add to our agenda that we probably did not have time to get to, so, that would be my thought on some of that. What else, any other?
Just one, one last thing, is there's, there is a part in the charter that talks about the Board of Finance meeting with the Town Council and the Board of Education, and this is on the last page, I would recommend that the Board of Finance meet with the council three times a year at least, and the Board of Ed at least twice. I would request that the Board of Finance and the council get together in July, we start our capital process in August, and I think it would benefit everybody to have kind of a level setting of the priorities that council sees for the community, and that can even be a situation of setting aside dollars and just talking about what are the top priorities for the community, that would allow staff as well as the Board of Finance to understand as we're going through the process, and then attaching dollars to it. How many of those can be funded, and as we look at funding things, I will tell you from the Capital Committee standpoint, that's how we get to the end, is if we're saying that we think a certain dollar amount of capital for the year should be presented, we try to look at departments, we try to look at priorities, and we try to talk to those who are closest to it to understand the priorities, so I think it would benefit everybody to have that meeting in July before we start that process. I would propose that in January, the Board of Finance meet with both the council and the Board of Ed to talk about the budget, to discuss operational priorities, and to really understand not just the numbers that are put in front, but what are the characteristics behind it. And then finally, a meeting in March where the Board of Finance would have an opportunity to present to council and to the Board of Ed the budget that they intend to present to the taxpayers in the town, and be able to field questions, potentially make adjustments, but make sure that there's at least a level setting out there at that point, and certainly there could be other interactions more than this, but at least that, I think, would be beneficial for the process.
Yeah, I don't think three's enough, quite frankly, but, especially from July to January, a lot can happen in that timeframe, January to March is a fairly short timeframe, I mean, I would say definitely three, but I would hope we would meet more often, at least in those first six months, certainly even because it's a new process too, at least this year, you know, we'll see what everybody wants to do, but, yeah, I would think we'd want to meet a little bit more often just till we maybe are all more comfortable with the process, that would be my, you know, recommendation.
Yes, yes.
So, in effect, the Board of Finance will do what our finance committee did, that Dave ran quite well, actually, and that we all attended, so that part will be lifted from our menu.
That's my understanding, Corporation Council, Jeff, is that maybe not a perfect fit, but...
The council will still be obviously intimate, involved in the budget-making process, the council will still be the lead with regard to any borrowing that the town is going to do. The Board of Finance, really, on a month-to-month basis, under both the form of the charter provision as well as under the Connecticut General Statute, really kind of deals with the non-budgetary, and when I say non-budgetary, I mean, not, the council deals with everything else, okay? So, when there's monthly reporting that goes on, and there's questions about how the budget is tracking, and what you're, what you expect to be over, what you expect to be under, inter and intradepartment transfers that don't require the legislative body's approval, those types of things, so I'm not really privy to what the finance committee's been doing, I haven't had the privilege of going to one of your meetings, but if that's what you've been doing in terms of looking at the monthly reports that you get from the finance office and...
No, no, no.
They do the budget.
It's the budget-making process.
It's the budget.
Departments come in and beg, and we say no, but, I mean, that's basically what it amounts to.
Well, you don't do that all year long, though.
Yeah, no, no, no.
No, just in the...
March.
I do it the rest of the year.
Yeah, he did, yeah, that's right, that's Kevin Shaw the rest of the year, but, yeah, so, the budget, our budget hearings, that...
That's not going away.
Oh, it's not going away?
No.
Okay.
So, we'll do it...
You'll be meeting with the Board of Finance.
During that timeframe?
Yes.
I got you. Yeah, go ahead.
I did propose, there is a calendar as well, I know it's early, but there is a proposed calendar that would change, process a bit, I think, one of the big things, you'll see the items that are in red towards the bottom are essentially the if-necessary items, so, it is possible, depending on if we have both, you know, if there are one, if there's one or two referendum, we could be looking at after Memorial Day, when the mill rate is set, if it extends that long, the second referendum will have to happen four weeks after the first, so by calendar, you're just dealing with that extension, but I am proposing, and I know it's very early, so it's clearly just an early proposal, that we potentially shrink down some of the initial department meetings and have more of a focused approach, and go from there with workshops afterwards, which I think might help relieve a little bit of what you're referencing.
I, oh, sorry, Mr. Bayram.
I was just going to get a clarifying point on, I mean, you presented that there's budget meetings one through five or six there, those, you're saying that those budget meetings are going to be joint? My understanding that that would be a finance... are going to be joint? My understanding that that would be a finance committee meetings. And those were the ones where we spent a lot of time. And I think to Mr. Russell's point, the concern there is that now when we get to joint meetings, those, those are like the April, the week of April 10th, at least the way it's presented right now. Those are, and work sessions just before it. So, I don't, I don't see as much time as the town council's subcommittee, budget committee has in past years spent on hearing from the department heads. I'll stand corrected if need be, but that's my impression in looking at the...
Well, there is, the, the items highlighted in yellow would be the same timing.
The only copy given to us electronically was black and white. I do not have a colored copy.
The March 1st through the 14th meetings, one through six, would be the same meetings as were held in prior years?
I think the question is, is it Board of Finance only holding those meetings or is town council expected to be at those meetings as well? It's, it's my understanding that Board of Finance goes through the process, votes on a budget, and then the council gets kind of involved. So, so council won't be in those March meetings.
You could as a citizen, but you would not be as...
Right, right, okay.
...at joint meetings.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that may be answered. That, that clears it up, yeah, okay.
So, six times three hours, twenty hours coming back, I think, as a minimum.
Yeah, we will all take that, I'm sure, twenty hours back in our life. Yeah, that's always good.
And I, and I'm being very thick, so I apologize to everybody in the audience if you already know the answer to this. I'm going to go back to my eleven thousand dollar door question. So, even though it's budgeted today, Doug goes out, has to get eleven thousand dollars to fix a door. He's got to come to council and council has to approve it. So, in a situation now with Board of Finance, my assumption is it's the same thing. He'll have to go to the Board of Finance and get it approved. So, here's where I'm struggling. If it is a three-three or if it's not passed, does Doug just not get his new door or does it come to count? I think we need to figure that out.
You're talking about not, you're talking about requesting money that's in the budget to be moved around, an interdepartment or...
No, no, to just to be spent.
You're talking about new, you're talking about new money?
It's in the, so Doug has an operating budget of fifty thousand dollars. He wants to use eleven thousand of that to fix a door. If it's got to go up to an RFP, it's got to come and get approved by council to be spent.
Right, right.
So, what happens if Board of Finance says no?
It's in the budget and Board of Finance says no, then it's dead.
So, Doug doesn't get his door?
No.
And it doesn't come to the, the council. Okay.
They tell Doug to get a cheaper door.
Yeah, right. Hopefully, yeah, eleven thousand dollars for a door.
That's what they will tell him. Yeah, that's quite a door for eleven grand, but...
Okay.
All right. Apologize to everybody in the audience. Trying to get it figured out.
No, I think it's important. I mean, I'll tell you, Kate and I talked for quite a while to make sure, because we want to make sure we have the process. If it needs to go to Board of Finance first, we're giving people appropriate direction and we'll follow where we go.
Right.
If I may, just to add a little bit, on the paper, the paperwork that I gave you tonight, the mayor had asked me to put it together with the charter. So, if you look under section seven dash eleven, okay, my understanding is when it's contingency funds, Kevin, do you agree with this? That if they're going to appropriate contingencies funds, Board of Finance needs to approve that, then that is going to come to the council.
Okay.
Okay, so if you need something like for snow removal, all right, that's where you would get involved. Then if you go down to that second paragraph, is that when you get into that last three months of the fiscal year, again, it would go, if you're going to transfer ten thousand dollars out of the town clerk's office into the town manager's office, that would go in front of the Board of Finance and then go to the council. Okay? Is that...
Okay.
All right, so that's where some of these things as, and we're going to have to keep reading the charter.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Because all the changes within the budget, you know what I mean? So, that, that's why it would start going in front of the council.
Okay. Okay. How, how about things like revenue? I'm sorry, I keep, things keep popping in. So, like, like fees, does that go to Board of Finance? Does that come to council? If we're changing fees for anything, who's responsible for that type of thing?
My understanding is fees would still come to the council because the fees are establishing a schedule for the community.
Okay.
But the application of that and establishing the budget...
Right, okay.
Would be, but I mean, I don't know if council agrees with that.
Yeah, if you're talking about setting or changing a fee, whether it's in an ordinance or other legislative body enacted provision, it would be the legislative body that would have to change it. And it would be the Board of Finance that would be responsible for administering that budget from that date.
Okay.
And most of our ordinances have been changed, which you would be familiar with, that the fee has been taken out of the ordinances with the reference to the fee schedule.
So, it'd be that once-a-year fee schedule approval?
Right, so that follows it. That still is legislation, right? Okay, so that's where, yes.
The body that, the body that enacted it has to change it.
Okay.
And, and even, we will continue to present the overall fee schedule, January, February timeframe, and even in the golf ordinance that was just passed, there's a reference to bringing the fee schedule forward in January. And that's important to establish for the upcoming season.
Okay.
Okay. You know, obviously, it's new, you know, new for most of us. I know we had a Board of Finance many years ago, but it's a different, a little bit different form of government now with it. But obviously, many, many towns and cities have it, seems to work. And, you know, it's our first year. I know there'll be some growing pains, I'm sure. But with, you know, town manager position, the corporation council, finance director, I'm sure they will lead us in the right direction, the council and the Board of Finance, whoever is on those bodies. And I'm sure we'll get through it, you know. The first year maybe, maybe a little bit bumpy, right? But once we learn the process, we'll be fine. Yes.
I won't be here. Someone else will.
Yeah, Rachel's thinking, thank God, I'm not here now, no. But, so, yeah, I mean, we'll have plenty of guidance. We'll have plenty of time. That's why I would say in the beginning of those first six months, definitely the Board of Finance and the council perhaps spend a lot of time to get, well, not a lot of time, but, but more time than, we probably will in future years if, if that happens, just so we can get through this.
Get it going.
Yeah, that's what I would say. But, hey, are there questions for Mr. Laney?
I just want to say thank you for, for presenting. I'm sure you guys put a lot of time and effort into it, so thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it, filling in the gaps that we've all had and we appreciate, and we'll, we know you will be there when we actually implement it, so that, that will be more of a headache for you, but that's okay. That's what your job is, right? There you go. Happy to have you. All right, thanks. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, agenda item number five is Public Act seventeen dash one-five-five, Temporary Healthcare Structures. The state of Connecticut passed that act in, in July of 2017. It becomes effective October 1st of 2017. It provides the cities and towns must allow temporary healthcare structures as allowable accessory structures to single-family homes. Unless there's an opt-out clause, and the town is, what the town is doing, it's asking the council to prove us, the, taking the opt-out clause. And Helen Riggins is here to discuss the act.
Come on up, Helen. We, I'm sure we all have a lot of questions. I know I do.
What is it?
Before we...
What is it?
Yeah, well, we can, we can start with that. Yeah, that's, that's always good.
Yeah, I think special transcript through this and this one.
Yeah, what's, yeah, how did this come up through the state?
Hi.
Hi, Helen.
I'm happy to answer questions as best I can. This was an act by the legislature that I think we're still trying to figure out as well. But in your packet, you received a copy of the act. And then I also printed for you some of the material that I was able to find through the association that I belong to, the American Planning Association of Connecticut. But a summary, a quick summary is the legislature felt that there should be an ability for people to have a caregiver and a residence for that caregiver on their premises. And they said that it has to be a medical or mental disability with it, that you provide to, with a doctor's note to a town. And at that point, then the, the town must allow you to put in one of these, they're known as granny pods. You know, they're referred to as that, but they, they're actually called temporary healthcare structures. They're set at a minimum of five hundred square feet. They don't need town approval. You can just put, they can just have one unless the town decides to opt out. At last Thursday's Planning and Zoning Commission, I brought this same item before the planning and zoning. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the town council must, must approve to opt out. The Planning and Zoning Commission studied the issue and talked about it and decided that based on the fact that our zoning regulations already allow in most zones for accessory dwelling units, which is where you can take a section of your house and create a separate entity for a 55 and older person. So, that's not just medical or a mental disability. It's just to allow your parents to move in if they need or, because it says a member of the family, 55 and older. Or part two of that is you can take a section of your house and rent it to someone at an affordable rate to help with our affordability, reaching our 10% goal. So, we already have that in our zoning regulations. And we also allow up to 700 square feet, whereas this is 500. So, the planning commission felt that we've already set a mechanism in place to provide for this, that the statutes are trying to, or the state is trying to allow for. So, they felt comfortable with their own regulations that, that they had covered this niche that, that the state's trying to create. Many towns don't have what we already had in their zoning regulations. So, I think that might have been part of the reason that this came up.
Now, just, so, I guess for lack of a better term, we'll use granny pods, probably easier to identify. But so, when they say, all right, so let's say the, under the state regulation, someone wants to do that, do we know, do we have any clue, have they defined what, what it is? I mean, is it a trailer? Is it a...
It is anything you want to...
A cargo container? What?
You're exactly right.
Really?
It could be anything that the building code would deem habitable. So, you can build it yourself.
Oh, my.
You can buy one. It's, it's anything that meets their basic criteria of 500 square feet and of course would have to have, you know, livable arrangements, water, septic or sewer.
Okay.
So, if, if the building code, if it met the basic living requirements for the building code, then it would meet the requirements.
And the town, if we opted into this ordinance, would have no say to go out and inspect that pod and make sure it's safe?
Well, no, the, no, the building code, they would have to abide by the building.
The building inspector, okay, the building inspector could go out.
That would have, that would have to happen.
Okay, but, but...
But you're right, there's no, like, there's, there's a traveling granny pod right now that people can go and tour. And that's if you want to, you know, spend 60,000 for one to put in your backyard. But a lot of people, or, or I don't know, they might be more than that. But, you know, you could actually buy a shed at Home Depot and run water and sewer to it. And if it's, you know, habitable, it works. You know, there would be a point of insulation added to it and that sort of thing. But generally, they don't get it down that deeply into it.
Okay.
It's, they just say if it's habitable, you could...
So, when I joked with my in-laws about putting them in the shed out back, now if we pass this, we could send them out there?
Don't offer it.
No, 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 but...
It is a possibility as long as the building official says it's habitable.
And it, so it doesn't have to be attached to the house necessarily?
No, no. And I think that you do get to impose your own setbacks, but I'm not, I'm not really sure about that. Again, this, the actual statute isn't, hasn't been tested.
Right.
You know, it's brand new. It goes into effect October 1st. And so, we're, we're, you know, I'm bringing it to you now, so you have the choice before it goes into effect.
Okay, yep.
Peter, first. Did the, and I missed it if you said it, did the planning and zoning opt out?
They did opt out, based on the fact they felt like their regulations already embraced what this legislation was trying to do.
A couple of questions. One, you said most of our zoning. So, what happens to the folks who aren't in the most?
It's in your very dense, high-density areas. There are 11, 11,000 square foot lots and our 11. And so, that isn't permitted at this time. I think the planning commission plans to take a look at that.
Okay. My second question is, are there consequences of opting out? Do we lose any state money or we just opt out?
Not, there's nothing in the literature that I found that, that says that there's any kind of penalty for, for not, or for choosing to opt out. They, they gave us the ability to opt out.
Okay.
So, there's nothing that I'm aware of.
And my last question, which if we opt out, won't matter, but, you know, if you have a 500 square foot trailer, whatever it is, is that taxable? Is that square footage added onto the taxable property? Or is it not included?
I, I'm assuming that it is. I don't have, I don't have an, an answer for that. They didn't talk about, that I can find the taxable part of it. But, and by the way, the Connecticut APA did write a memorandum that I gave to you where they were opposed to the legislation. They felt like that it bypassed zoning laws and I've copied that for you too, so...
Can I see that here?
Are, would these structures still have to conform to the current offsets from the lot lines and so forth?
In the question-answer section, it, it says, can my town pass setback regulations for these structures? And it says yes and no. Yes if the town passes a different setback requirement for temporary healthcare structures between now and October 1st. And then upon that date, they would be subject to those differential setbacks. If the town makes no change between now and October 1st in the zoning regulations, the setbacks in place at that point would control.
So, the current setbacks would have to be met. And you mentioned that any connection to the sewer or water would have to meet the standard building code. So, there'd be no special exceptions for this?
There would be no...
Special exceptions for the water and sewer requirement?
Oh, no.
All have to meet?
They have to have sanitary conditions in which to live. They have to be habitable because, because it's not like you're sleeping there and then going inside to use the facilities. It has to be...
Is there any sunset on this? If you installed one of these for your...
Yes.
grandmother and God forbid she passed away twenty years from now, there is a sunset to it, you would have to remove it or?
You have, you would have to remove it or reestablish a need for. So, it would have to be removed, but...
I think it says within 120 days in the statute.
Okay, thank you.
You know, there would have to be, if, if the town did opt out, there would have to be some sort of mechanism put in place where the town tracked these. Because if someone bought and paid for the structure, unless they could sell it, otherwise they, they, it could very well stay. And you, and you know, I, I'd have to read the obituary or whoever I read.
Oh, my goodness, yeah, right.
Have to read the obituaries or, you know.
Yeah.
Or even it says in there is deemed not handicapped or mentally disabled. And if it's, you know, if it's a rehabilitation situation, you may never know that they're no longer.
Right, right. And then with a doctor's note, you can't pry, you know, which is rightfully so. But you, you don't even know what the issue is. You just have a note from the doctor that says they qualify under the statute, period. That would be all the doctor could write to you.
Any other comments, questions for Helen?
Yeah, I'm going to urge my fellow councilmen to not, to opt out. I, I think since we're covered under the planning and zoning...
I think we're all with you. Okay, yeah, I think we're all with you. Yeah, I think we're all with you, but just, if you have anything to add, just from your perspective?
Fortunately, those with good sense prevailed upon the General Assembly to include the opt-out.
Okay.
It wasn't in the earlier versions of the bill. And the way the opt-out is written is it requires that the Planning and Zoning Commission first, at a public hearing, determine whether or not it wants to opt out and state the reasons on the record. And the reason for that, obviously, is there's a big concern about preempting the regulatory process, preempting the land use regulations and zoning regulations, which have always been left to the local communities to determine. And aside from it being a bad idea to go down that road, it also creates, as Ms. Riggins indicated a couple minutes ago, a, a tracking and monitoring struggle, another one for, for municipalities. So, I don't, there's no penalty for opting out. It was added to the legislation because there was a pry for it. And I would certainly recommend that you stick with your own regulations, which... recommend that you stick with your own regulations, which are less restrictive and are more accommodating, but are regulations and are appropriate for this type of use.
Thanks.
Yeah. I know I'm swimming upstream here, but I'm a little hesitant to opt out because of my own personal experience in town. I tried to take advantage of building a mother-in-law apartment, for lack of a better term. And after going through our wetlands procedure and our zoning Board of Appeals, which took six months, the staff held me up for another four and a half years, and my mom passed away before she ever got to sleep in the bedroom. And as a resident, I had no recourse. And I just want to make sure our residents, if they want to care for a family member, have that possibility.
So if I may add to that, your holdup was strictly with the Health Department. It was not with zoning. And so you would have that same holdup with this issue here, because you lack...
Well, that's why I inquired, did it.
Yes.
I don't want to get into my personal problem. Five engineers said my project was fine. That's a whole nother issue. My issue, I just want to make sure that our residents have every possible advantage to care for their family.
And I agree with you totally. But again, I don't want the sword aimed at Planning and Zoning, because Planning and Zoning approved, it was strictly the Health Department.
I'm not pointing the sword at anybody. I'm just saying, I just want to make sure that people have the option.
It would be the same issue today.
You know, our town requires 10 acres for a chicken. I can only imagine what they're gonna require for grandma.
Well, I mean, we have a plan in place, and Ms. Riggins has indicated that Planning and Zoning is gonna look at the properties that aren't included now. Something that they're gonna go back and look at. To me, it's quite an overreach from the state to dip into our town and tell us what to do with our zoning. I would be extremely uncomfortable with that. I think we have enough state overreach already on so many things, as has been demonstrated recently. So, you know, that would be my opinion, that we wouldn't, we would opt out of this.
Can I just ask on the zoning that we have already? So you said it allows you to take a portion of your existing building and add on. So what if you have a really small house, and you want to actually build on to Mr. P. Nessa's point? Does zoning allow for that? It doesn't, right? Because you have to be within...
Okay, so let's get into just a little basic zoning here. You're in a single-family zone. And so if you're in a single-family zone, the point of the regulations is to keep you a single-family. But the zoning regulations understand that life happens, and so they wanted to provide a mechanism for a temporary way for you to be comfortable moving in a relative into your house. So it allows for a bump out of 150 square feet, which is basically a bathroom, or a little bit more room for a bedroom, or a sitting area or something. But they did that, and I wasn't here when it was created, but in my opinion, I think they did that in order that that single-family protection is not harmed, so that you don't have a whole separate duplex. You don't have a two-family house. And then what do you do with it when it's gone? And how do you incorporate, how does a family fill up a second house that you've built on to accommodate someone? And you've basically broken the rules of zoning. You now are not a single-family zone. We have a zone that allows for a two-family, and that's our 7. So they said, we understand life happens, so we're going to create an ability for what are called accessory dwelling units. And you can bump out 150 square feet, and then they can be up to 700 square feet. And there, in my time here, we've probably done about six or seven or eight of them. And they've never been denied. There have been people opposed to them, because they felt like their residential neighborhood was turning into a two-family. But the Planning Commission, if it meets the rules, it meets the rules.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Just a question, 'cause I was noticed of a particular situation similar, and I could be certainly corrected if I was wrong, where that situation was brought before the Planning and the zoning. And I guess the question I would have is, if we opt out versus going with the state, would there be a different outcome in the situation that, and I forget the formal name for that, but it was considering a...
The accessory dwelling unit.
Accessory dwelling unit.
That's a public hearing that you attended.
Yes.
Well, if, if, if we didn't opt out, then I don't see the need, then probably the Planning and Zoning would say, if we don't opt out, then we're striking accessory dwelling units, which as I've stated, are more friendly. But then you could have three different entities somehow going, going on, you know, in one, in a single-family zone. So I imagine the Planning Commission, and I can't say for sure, but I would, I would feel, knowing them that I do, that they would say, now I've got three units in a single-family zone. So I would imagine they would then delete the accessory dwelling unit if they were forced to embrace this regulation. Does that make sense to you? No?
We need to spend more time understanding Planning and Zoning, apparently.
Yeah, well, because the, what, these temporary healthcare structures are, they're accessory dwelling units that aren't attached to the house. They're out in the yard. And so someone lives out there. And then the accessory dwelling units that we currently allow in town...
Can be connected, be part of the house.
Are part of the house. And, you know, you're not an outsider. So if we had both, you could tip, you could have three different entities living there. I guess, I guess it's room for both in-laws. I don't, I don't know. But I imagine that the Planning Commission would choose to not have both, if we didn't opt out. I imagine they would strike then the accessory dwelling unit.
I mean, I guess I'm kind of struck by the thing that, so, glad someone asked that question, you explained it. That so, once that, unfortunately, person passes on, they would, they would have to remove that structure, right? Unless they had another person with a doctor's note moving in? Is that, I guess, or we don't even know what the statute says about that?
I wouldn't know. So, you know, it doesn't really address, how we do accessory dwelling units is every year, they're supposed to reinstate themselves with the town. And I would hope that if we didn't opt out of the temporary healthcare structures, that there would be some sort of requirement on their part to, to recertify every year.
Okay, so, so, yeah, they do have to be removed, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's another cumbersome part of it, I guess, if you...
Yeah, for me to track.
Well, to track, and even for a person to, you know, build it and furnish it, put plumbing and heating in it, and then...
And then get rid of it. Think of the expense. So if you, if you ran water and electricity, how eager would you be to get rid of it?
I wouldn't want to get rid of it, obviously, if I had one. I'd just leave it and do something with it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, if it, there's a possibility that it could be converted to something. But once you already have a bath, you know, a living space, we couldn't allow that to happen, because then it wouldn't be legal anymore. We'd have two dwellings on one lot.
Because if I owned it, I guess I'd want to rent it out, which, which is against the, you know, at that point, we're against the zoning regulations if we leave it, and we don't remove it in 120 days, yeah.
Right. And I don't know who keeps up with it, you know, or how to do that.
Okay.
My last thoughts are, as I'm kind of agreeing with Peter, is that, you know, if there was an upswelling of support for something like this, I'd rather have it happen within the town, and we control the regulations, rather than be forced to do it when we're not even sure what it's all about.
Your speak, that's exactly how the Planning Commission felt.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments? We have a motion?
Move to opt out of the Public Act 17-155, Temporary Healthcare Structures.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay.
So did the motion pass?
Yes, it did.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Helen.
Okay. Agenda item number six is a tax abatement request for Bella Hardwood Flooring. They've submitted an application for construction of a 5,000-square-foot building on 4-Rod Road. It includes an expansion of Bella Hardwood Floors, and requesting real estate tax abatement per the town's policy. Chris Edge is here to discuss the request.
Good day, councilmembers.
Hey.
Bella Hardwood Flooring has been in town, I believe, for about five years. They've been, they're at 500 4-Rod Road right now, looking to construct a 5,000-square-foot building on 600 4-Rod, which is directly behind Cambridge Specialties. It is the multi-building condo units, best way to put it, behind the buildings there. There's nine spots. This is building eight. The one spot has not been built. So essentially, he had come before Economic Development Commission, as well as Planning and Zoning, to get approval for his building. And we're just asking the council for the three-year, 50, 40, 30 tax abatement for this company, growing and adding employees here in Berlin.
Okay. Motion on this?
They will move to approve a tax abatement for Bella's Hardwood Flooring for a construction of a 5,000-square-foot industrial building in Berlin, of 50% in year one, 40% in year two, and 30% in year three, per the town's tax abatement policy.
Okay. Second on that?
Second.
Discussion?
It's good.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? Okay. Next, Chris, right?
The next one is another, excuse me, agenda item number seven, is another tax abatement for DEF Properties. They're building, they're middle construction of a 5,000-square-foot industrial building on Willowbrook Drive. It includes the relocation of ABC Hydraulics. And they are also requesting a real estate tax abatement per the town policy, similar to the previous one. And again, Chris is here to discuss that.
Yes. ABC Hydraulics is a company that does both repair, maintenance, as well as manufacturing tubing for construction equipment. Essentially, they do most of their work at job sites, currently in Rocky Hill, relocating to Willowbrook Drive. The last use of the property was a landscaping company. Anybody that drives by it now, it's pretty much all pavement. So nice thing he's gonna be moving to town, build a 5,000-square-foot building, hire a couple employees, and it's a nice little, a nice addition. It's a small lot, but he's gonna be putting a new building on it, which is good news, plus a new company to town.
Excellent. Great. Motion on this?
Okay. Move to approve a tax abatement for DEF Properties LLC for the construction of a 5,000-square-foot industrial building in Berlin, of 50% in year one, 40% in year two, 30% in year three, per the town's tax abatement policy.
Second on that?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Looks like we added, maybe had some jobs, too, with these, right?
Addendum item number eight is a request for the Berlin Lions Club to waive the police traffic control fees for the Berlin Fair last weekend, in the amount of approximately $27,650. We haven't got the exact figures, but they are requesting that they have the fees waived as they do on an annual basis.
Okay. Motion on this?
Move to approve waiving the police traffic control fees for the Berlin Lions Club 2017 Berlin Fair, in the approximate amount of $27,650. Said figure to be exactly determined after the fair.
Second on this?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. If we adjusted the budget for this, why are we, are we waiving an additional 27? Or are we really only waiving $2,650?
Well, we're actually, we, they have to request the entire amount per the town policy. And so you're waiving the entire amount.
Okay, but really, from a budget perspective, although it gets crazy. Okay, all right. Thank you.
David?
I have the same comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, the police had to step in and be collecting money and tickets and everything, because it was so busy Saturday.
Yeah, it's the first year, it's the first year they had to do that in a long time, I think, right?
It was probably much appreciated for the help.
Fantastic, yeah. That's great. Okay, motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Agenda item number nine is a request to move for an 8-24 review Grove Hill Right Away for partial abandonment. The site of the former Kensington Grammar School, which was purchased by the St. Paul's Church, and they now have their parking, parking lot located on it. Grove Street has an unusually wide right-of-way. I guess at one point, my understanding was, is that it was going to be a thorough fair or boulevard at one point a long time ago. The church is requesting that the town abandon and the property, the additional, typically a right-of-way is like about 55 feet, and this one's about 100 feet. They're requesting that we get the difference in it, be abandoned, and the church obtain that property.
Okay. Motion on this?
Move to refer the matter of a partial abandonment of the Grove Hill Right Of Way adjacent to 462 Alling Street to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an 824 review, as per the Connecticut general statutes.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just have a quick question, Jack. I'm familiar with this property. There are other people, owners down the street, that can probably apply for this, too, right? Because...
It's already, some of this has been done, or, there's like, if you go to the other side of Alling Street, the church already has an easement, which was granted a while ago, so that they can install parking in that area. Other people can apply to the town for the same, for the same...
Okay, just wanted to make that point, so that they can do that, too. I mean, it cuts through right everybody's front yard.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Agenda item number 10, which was added, is an 8-24 referral regarding a drainage easement for the B.A.L.L.C., excuse me, 76 Fuller Way. They would need an easement for drainage that would go to a pond adjacent to the town on site. They need to show, they need to meet certain requirements for that drainage easement. So that we're requesting that the first step would be an 8-24 review by Planning and Zoning.
Okay. Motion on this?
Sure. Move to refer the matter of granting a drainage easement for 76 Fuller Way to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a review pursuant to Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Second on this?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? Okay, that's the end of our topics. And we have, looks like we have one appointment. This time, take nomination for this?
Hope I get this right. I'll nominate Melissa Fagan to the North Central Regional Mental Health Board, right, because Mr. Truitt resigned?
Yes. Is there, well, all right, so that's our nomination. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Ms. Fagan?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved? Okay. Town manager report?
Okay. I have a brief report. I guess we'll start off, the first, one of just, we've had three personnel items come up in the last week. We have one retirement, a longtime employee, Lucy Kudjuski, from the Tax Department, has decided to retire. Her retirement will take place effective within a couple of weeks. And that's because, a second personnel is that we hired a new tax collector, Debbie Swan. She previously worked in Guilford, and now she's working, she's been here two days, and says she's very happy in what she's doing, likes it. And a third one is not, is not as upbeat. We also had one resignation. I did send out a note to all the council. Helen Riggins has tendered her resignation. Her last day of employment will be October 2nd.
I do have some questions around that, in terms of what is the plan until she can be replaced? Two will be interim. You can't play three roles. I mean, so...
I wasn't, I wasn't planning on that.
So what, what will we be doing until she can be replaced?
Okay, I've already put, Denise Parsons and I have already started to talk about that. And we will need this week to put together a plan, you know, either hire a temporary planner, what we need to do. I've talked to Planning Chairman Moore also. So I would say, you know, before the end of the week, we'll have a plan together between the Human Resources and Planning and Zoning, to see how we will staff that position. And no, I'm not intending to do it.
Are there independent town planners, like some towns use a town engineer that's a subcontractor? Are there planners like that?
There are, there are, you know, just like there are with public works directors, you can hire temporary...
Like, is there a consulting forum? We could hire, hire on a temporary basis?
Yeah, you can, there are people out there, you can do that with. That may be what we ought to do. We would, you know, this came on Friday, and we are starting to put this together. I have talked to Denise about what would be, I have... I have talked to Denise about what would be, I have actually taken a little time going over to, talked to the Building Department, to Frank Van Linter also, he's the Building Inspector. I wanted to get their input into this also. I've talked to Frank, talked to Chairman Moore, Denise, and so we will be putting something together, I would say, next day or two.
What, how, what is her staff right now? She's got three or four?
Well, she, within the planning, she has herself, we have Fran, and we have Maureen in that department, and, you know, in the, in the Building Department, we have, you know, Frank, and we have John, and we have the Secretary, Administrative Assistant in that department, too.
Yeah, Dave, if you can keep us updated on that, just because October 1st is not far away, and, you know, we can't stop the town business, you know, those people need some direction.
Oh, it's, it's an important function.
Yep.
And that was why I felt, and we sent out a note to all of you, just so that you did know that. This was in the works.
Thank you.
I just, I know that I've get some calls on this, and I'm sure you do, too. Our favorite bridge, Farmington Avenue Bridge. There's a, again, there's a couple delays, but the thing is, we are actually, we have forced them to give us a schedule to when they are going to come to an end. It was, you know, I was pushing for it in September. It's probably going to be mid to late October that they will be completely done and out of there. There are some, some issues that come up every day that normally would come up, but, you know, they are, they are pushing to do that. We are administering liquidated damages. They have come back and asked if they, if I would, if we would consider leaving with that. And I went back to them, that I wouldn't consider it at this point, because I don't see where, I didn't see a lot of extra effort to come forth and say, "Hey, we'll get this done by the end of September." I didn't see that. So at this point, the town's not agreeing to that, and DOT has made no indication that they would agree to that also, either. The sidewalk project is actually, that's going very well. I've been really happy, because I haven't heard anything but good things. I haven't heard anybody come and say, you know, "You chewed up my driveway," or "It didn't come out right." And so it's, it's coming along very well. We've, we've adjusted also. Nice thing, I think, this time, is we spent time going out and walking this, walking the street and meeting with the residents, and, you know, if you look, you're gonna see a little bit of jog here or there. What we did is we actually jogged them, because if a resident, like, on one of the corners, there's a, there's a tree that a resident was concerned about, so we, we pushed it out a little bit more toward the road, kept it away from the tree. So we've done that, and for the most part, well, not for all, you know, I've only had one negative comment to me so far. If you've got others, that's, that'd be the first thing I heard, but we've actually had some very positive feedback.
And that gas line they hit was fixed right away?
Yeah.
Okay, so there was no issues with that?
Yeah, that's a negative, of course.
Well, it is, but it was fixed.
It was fixed right away, yeah.
As long as it was fixed right away.
There was no question, it had to be fixed. It was an inconvenience, but we, and I also was surprised, we'd have, we took the trees down on Burner Street. I was surprised we didn't get any real, we didn't get any negative feedback on that either. That did surprise me, to be honest. I thought there would be some, some pushback, and we've received none on that either at this point. The only other thing I say is the Housing Authority agreement is, is in the final redraft. It looks like it's going forward, so, again, that's, that's a positive. And along with, we are working on some final things with the state DEP about the Silver Lake property. So I think those two items are moving forward. And I had a nice time with the senior center today.